They had a picture of Tina. They had cameras of the picture. And it was in that name, that he's at the beach. And he said that picture was so clear that you could see the birds. So, we're talking about this right now, building like a bank.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Dan has to, he has to. Yeah, so we're gonna have that blown up. Like, he said it was such a quick picture that you could even see the bird. So, we're gonna have that scanned. And then for a larger vote. And that's gonna be on the CD.
Oh, sure.
So, that should be fine.
Those pictures are amazing.
Oh, it's just, I just love all that stuff. I should've brought this picture of Tina. All those, all the stuff that you brought from Arsha. Of course, I've combed through it, but I have to, you know, get it, you know, memorize it. Anyway, there was a picture of the building that I bought. Do you remember seeing that picture? Who was the person by the car?
I'm thinking it was my dad.
I was wondering if it was, well, somebody suggested that that was your dad. Do you want that picture back?
No.
Thank you.
That's fine.
I would give it back to you, though.
No, that is fine.
Because it's going to be, I'm, I'm trying to, guy said he had some pictures too, and so I'm trying to collect all the pictures. And I possibly can't have that building for the years. And I wanna do a whole big history board.
Oh, okay. And if I thought we'd come across more, because like I said, we're not done yet.
Oh, well, it would be a joy. And so, the other question I wanted to ask you, your mother did such a wonderful job of recording all the first three years of Mama. I mean, it's just wonderful. So, we would like to use that at the time to remember it now.
That is fine. Those are all, that's all your stuff.
Okay, because, because that, I just, you, I almost cried for the whole thing. It was just so wonderful to see it. She did a, I mean, she was like, really writing every, I mean, she did a great job.
Yeah, all people's names and everything.
I know, she did a very nice job.
Yes, she did.
And that's, that's recording history. So, it's really nice. I just have so much fun going through all this stuff. And of course, Dan has been just so active.
Yeah, he loves history.
Yeah, so, it's just so fun to see it.
And I was telling Howard that, you know, we're gonna look at some of these pictures, and then you have to say, well, where was that taken from? Because now I can't recognize.
Yeah, the trees have grown up.
Yeah, or the building could disappear. Or, or, you know, you say, okay, well, this one had to been taken, like, from the veterans' building, looking across, but then we can't figure out what this, Howard thought that thing that we saw in the back of the hotel might have been a porch.
On the hotel?
On the hotel.
Yeah. Because it couldn't have been part of that thing.
Yeah, yeah, he said it, he thinks it might have been a porch in the back.
It's a puzzle. And I like to put puzzles together, so it's like, well, where is this piece? And so, now I'm saying, well, who were they? And who, let's, who was, who's that? And Arsha says, well, they were related to.
Yeah.
So, it becomes fun. Super fun. It's got such a funny history.
My grandson has to do a genealogy something for school. And so, when I got home Sunday night, I emailed a whole bunch of stuff that I had in my computer from, it goes back to my, my grandfather's grandfather. On my dad's side, and, and my mother's grandfather, my mom's side, so, all this stuff that I had put in my computer from, and stories about stuff. Oh, nice. So, um, some of it I highlighted, so he wouldn't know which lines were, because he's got the other siblings, you know? So, then I had only the ones that could be his direct ones. But I hadn't talked to her since she got it. When I sent it to my nephew out in Oklahoma, all he could say was, wow. Actually, on that, on my mom's, it goes back to the 17th. You know, all the lineage that has some of the names and what years they were in. One of my mom's distant distant had done the genealogy up to 1974. And it was on in China. Hello?
Hi.
One of the scientists translated into English.
I'd rather have snow. I'd rather have snow.
Well, the odds in my head still.
So, the room or through? This one? It's on you? It is, yes. You turn in my resignation here next week or so, and out of the town on June 1st. We're heading off to Saginaw. My sister's got a place on the way. She's having a list.
That's nice.
Yeah, well, they live in Florida, and it's just kind of their summer.
Oh.
So.
That's nice.
And we use it and pay the taxes on it now, we just.
So. Is the ice on?
Yes, yes, it is. Where about symbols from Walmart? Okay. Fall nature of behavior. Federation from Texas, Texas excellent.
Yes.
No, no.
I understand.
What's going on other than that?
Because then I said, you heard, you'll get a message later. I'm coming to the station for the station. Oh, okay. I'm here for another week or so, so.
Let me look at my calendar.
Do you have my phone number?
I do.
Six, seven, two, one, two, seven. One, nine, seven, nine. I didn't hear anything today. It's morning. And anytime, we can meet anywhere.
Good, how are you? Good to see you.
For the state financial support. How are you today?
No.
Good lunch is Tuesday.
Yeah, I saw that. I got it on my calendar.
All good.
See, it's like.
And then for any work of the month.
That's true. And then also.
Yeah. I got surgery.
Yeah, couple tunnel.
Last year was my first year. We're pretty much, let's just see. If we get.
Okay. Talking to get a portion turned, living with one hand was a real chore.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of like. Why did it go on?
Probably passed.
Well, they probably didn't answer you, but when you're, when you're making a prescription for, for pain, so to put you down, push it, push it.
I usually don't. We're sitting here at work.
A bargain sitting here.
We usually have an idea how many steaks we're gonna buy. Really? Just the number of how many steaks we're gonna buy. So, we try to not get too many over what we can actually.
Ben said five hundred was the maximum in the date.
Yeah, I think we've actually got down for there. Okay. Because our numbers kept dwindling.
You're welcome to come.
It's good to know, because we're gonna, we'd love to sell, because I think we make money on it.
We're making a lot of changes.
How many we get will be the question.
Well, I'm, we're gonna start our commercials, because all the calendars and all the events, these are posters of the office. So, we're gonna do a lot. So, that should have.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
So, it's not, it's not part of the city. It's a private property. I'll serve this person.
Because not super important, but I.
Eating according.
Howard, Howard, you know, my guardian took me in. Howard, yeah.
Were you like the Finnie on?
I was, I, and he sat right by you today.
Yeah, then you just kind of moved to this area, right?
Well. She's happy.
Kinda, sorta. I thought so. Wait, it's been almost a year or so. I'd love to visit. I have relatives around. Yeah, so, that's gonna, I like the isn't. So, will you be able to get the watch? That's funny. I do too.
Emergency.
Yeah, I also heard that Starco was having one this very day.
There are more?
Yeah, there are. Yeah, so that'd be a good deal.
Yeah, I went last year, it was really good. Talked to a lot of people.
Yeah, it was.
We'll have to see. Should I have one?
Would it work? Would it help?
I don't know. You never know.
I was in eighth, and mine's got theirs. Oh, no. Yeah.
Well, I got all the old stuff down. And I had a process of putting the wall down.
Hey, how are you? Good.
Here, you can have my, because I'll share all.
Gary Peterson.
I had searched.
The tradition all known.
I'm a member.
Hey, did I have papers? Is there? Good, well.
So, look, people. There's another.
Well, you must be a student or watching me there.
Actually, I'm sorry, is that?
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha. Let's reach it.
Before we get started, I talked to you quite a bit, I was saying before, real life. Thank you very much for coming. Worse than both.
You're always the most light person.
You got some self-esteem, Dr. Gillis.
The others.
You are one.
Cactus collectors.
Cactus collectors are right.
Okay, right there.
A right to bump. Oh, that's scary.
Oh, no, he didn't mean anything like that.
You're still kind of bad, no?
Yeah. You know why I didn't have?
Yeah. Is it when you're turning?
I'm just turning. Why, no, no, I said. You don't have it? It looks. Yeah. Well, if we, if we all had to turn, that's sweet. I've been in government for fifty-some years, still, still being voted in. How long is over? He was twenty-eight years or something like that. I think Shumaleski was twenty-four years or something. And I think Sharon from Georgia was about forty-five years. Wow. I mean, he was, he was ninety-six years old, and you're still re-electing him. Well, he must have done a good job. Oh, well, it was like, you vote for the incumbent. Because you don't know what's. That, well, that's, you and I won't vote that. There's some people. Well, George. If they don't follow what's going on, then they're gonna do that. Because they don't, they don't have the sense to figure out who, who's bad. If we, if nobody votes for the incumbent, we'll have a really change of Congress this next term. Two hundred eighty-five or something, that we're up really. Yeah. Wow.
We have a lot of things going on. Eleanor and both senators. Tina Smith is gonna be here on the line tomorrow. And then we have the congressional poll, and it's not for the elections.
Yeah, yeah, but a lot of you will have a problem. Which, no matter what happens.
Now, where on my card?
Right there. Yeah, do you like the city council meeting or something?
The ones, yeah. The organization?
Yeah.
Can we look right here?
Yeah. Just hope so, don't shake.
Do you want me to pass it to you?
Yeah. I don't have a shot, mind. I think I'm gonna sit down.
I do agree.
And that would be very helpful. We're gonna talk the same thing. He said, they return account.
Why?
My wife and I both. But I'm retired as a school teacher.
Yeah, you got the one, they do the one for the.
Committing the order of legislation. Legislation.
The United States of America, the Constitution, for which stands our nation, our God, and this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, well, so we have some distinguished and honored guests here tonight, and thank you for coming, one and all sides. And at the top of the list is Chris Plazin, 2017 Plaza Invitation. Chris, you're on.
You guys are in for a treat. You're gonna hear about a county, but you're not gonna be able to see it coming. Thank you, everyone. My name is Chris Plazin, I'm a partner at Justin Plazin and Company. We're a CPA firm out of Pequot in Nissaw, we have two locations, approximately eleven professional staff, and we're just thankful that we can provide the city with ever-present services. Okay, I'm seated.
Sure, please.
So, you have an audit, and then you have a communication letter. The communication letter is gonna be your financial summary of the audit, where it's briefly gonna go through that, take about ten minutes to get to the nuts and bolts of how you guys did, kind of a broad financial picture, and then kind of talk about your general controls and what you need to do on this. The communication letter, on page one, we're gonna start the audit process. Okay, we found the audit, the city's records, the working order, which means that organized, complete, available, etc. So, we were testing our items, everything was available to us. We didn't find discrepancies, we were able to bring three staff here for a while, or basically fold it and test all, everything we needed to test to get our, our audit work papers in place. Audit opinion, the final show statements we issued, we are considered fairly stated, which means we give an unmodified opinion, which means it's clean, okay? We do this under the regulatory basis of coming, which is not an accrual basis, which regulatory accounting principles are under. It's a regulatory basis of coming. You can do this because you are under twenty-five hundred population, okay? You don't have to report the same way the city deludes us, okay? Your, the regulatory basis is strictly driven by what we collect, what we spend, it's budget-driven. Cash in, cash out, okay? With that method, we still issued an unmodified financial financial statement, which is the best assurance that the auditor can give. As far as compliance issues, we noted no compliance issues with any state laws, regulations, or contracts, or grants during their testing. That's good. Internal controls, being a small city, you are gonna have some internal control weaknesses. Internal controls are the method, or the controls in place that the city uses to prevent financial statement, financial statement misstatement, okay? This could be because of fraud, or it could be because of error. These are the controls the city has in place to prevent those misstatements, okay? We did find a couple weaknesses. We noted segregation of duties and management override controls to be material weakness, which means there's a highly, highly likelihood that there could be issues. And we also issued a preparation of financial statements as significant deficiency, which means it's not as high as material weakness, but you should still be aware of this deficiency in your internal control, okay? None of these issues are abnormal for cities of your size, okay? Fund balance, for two thousand, we're talking about a little bit of numbers right now. For fund balance, the 2017 general fund balance increased by forty-two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, ending that little over fifty-two thousand at the end of year seventeen, okay? The ending fund balance in the general fund represents forty-nine percent of general fund expenditures for the next year, which means the city can operate approximately half a year without getting any more additional funds. Most cities operate between the fifty to eighty-five percent in that, so you're just about there. Some cities are within the, with a hundred percent, they're funded for a whole year. But the state auditor's office likes the city to have funds available, but not too much. That means you're just overtaxing. You guys are in the appropriate level there, okay? Budget to actual, when we look at the general fund, which is your general government, your budgeted revenue was four-point-five percent lower of five thousand dollars than what was budgeted for, okay? Four-point-five percent is, is great. You guys were, you guys were right on. This discrepancy, why it was lower, is because when you budgeted for real estate tax collected when you levy, some people didn't pay, and that's just because of the hardship of the area, you had some different real estate taxes, they might pay next year, they might pay the year after. So, it's, Kettle River is kind of one of those where you can levy, but you don't know when you're exactly gonna clean, okay? As far as the other end of, of the budget, your expenditures were about eight-point-two percent lower than what was budgeted for. You were lower in your general fund in all three categories. Your general government was lower, your streets were lower, and your parks were lower. So, you were, you know, eight percent lower than what you budgeted for, but that's, that's okay, okay? You had some capital all day that you budgeted for in the future, you just didn't spend it. Spend a lot, okay? That's perfectly fine. Coming out, if you add those two together, you're on more than ten percent of your budget, which is appropriate for the city of your size. If you were to be thirty percent off your budget, we would advise you guys to do a maybe a review of your budget and adjust, but it's okay. The budget can be found on page twenty-one and twenty-two of your audit, just for your, your sake, if you want to review which line items are off. Page two talks about a year recap. When we talk about governmental funds, we were talking about the general fund, the fire fund, and the debt service fund. Those are your governmental funds. Your water and sewer are your proprietary funds, okay? For your governmental funds, end of year cash balance was two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-two-two-two. Of this balance, forty-eight-thousand-three-zero-six was restricted for debt service and roads. One-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-three-three-one was assigned for fire, which means it's gonna be used for fire-related activities. And the thirty-seven thousand, approximately thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred is for your discretion as a city on the signing balance. So, you have that going forward in the eighteen that you have as your discretion. The net change in governmental funds, you had, you brought in across your funds, one-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand, and you spent one-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-three-three-five. You had a positive increase of thirty thousand for seventy-three. On an important note, next year, you free up, not eighteen, but nineteen, you free up twenty thousand dollars of debt service payments. You just paid one off in eighteen, I'm sure you're aware. So, that's a really good feeling for Kettle River, to get that extra boost of, of money freed up here. Proprietary funds had a, had, was sitting at a cash deficit, which means it doesn't have enough revenue where it has to draw from other sources, doesn't cover its expenditures. We're trying to get that up, it's gonna, it's kind of a climbing process with Kettle River. This year, you actually had a positive increase in cash position, which means you had enough, you built out enough to cover all your costs, you had actually a positive increase in cash position of twenty thousand, which means it's, it's reducing that negative every year that you're able to do this, okay? This year, you actually had a positive increase in cash position, which means you had enough, you built out enough to cover all your costs, you had actually a positive increase in cash position of twenty-thousand, which means it's, it's reducing that negative every year that you're able to do this, okay? On page three, it kind of gives you a, a kind of a pie graph, like where's the money going? This is your governmental funds, like I said before, it's your general, your fire, and your debt service. If you look at where the money's coming from, forty-eight percent is from property tax, your levy, twenty percent is from government aid, which means federal, state, county aid. There are twenty-two, twenty-six percent from fire protection fees, which you guys charged out, and just some miscellaneous license permits, and the other is roughly under, all those are under five percent, so. As far as disbursements, where's the, where's the money going for your general governmental funds? Twenty-two percent goes to fire, thirty-four percent goes to general government, nineteen percent goes to debt service, which is gonna go down next year, or in two thousand and nineteen, which is good. Nineteen percent goes to streets and highways, six percent is your parks, okay? Page four is your proprietary funds, water and sewer. They're, they're very user key-driven, which means that they're driven off your charges that you have for your residents for the services that it provides. Sewer charges are about forty percent of it, water is about forty-eight percent, and then your special assessments would be about eleven percent of that. For disbursements, your interest on your debt is about twenty percent of what you collect, goes out in that, your debt principal is eleven percent, supplies is nine, repairs and maintenance six, contract services is five, and then the personal services, which is your wages for the water and the sewer, is about thirty-nine percent. Going back to the internal controls, like I said before, this is the way to save, to save safeguards, it's, it's financial reporting process. It said internal controls are the way the city handles its financial reporting, it protects itself from fraudulent happenings, or misstatements, whether it be from error, or just inappropriate use of city funds. There are some material weaknesses in internal control, lack of segregation of duties, this is very common for cities of your size, there's different aspects of the accounting process that needs to be done to have adequate segregation of duties. The city doesn't have enough staff to do that. You would not have this enough staff unless you had five, six people here to do different, different aspects of the accounting function. With two people on staff here running the city, it's very difficult to have the proper segregation of duties. So, we have to note that, which means that the council has to be more involved, review checks, do a signature, so I know you guys are doing that, but it still doesn't negate the segregation of duties issue that we have to report to, okay? You guys are doing everything that you should be doing, it's just that with the limited staff we have, you have to be more vigilant than the city would have with twelve staff, okay? Management override controls. The city has procedures in place that the mayor and the city council members of the cities must follow collectively, okay? Management override controls exist when a member of management, or council, or mayor overrides prescribed policies, okay? The city deficiency might be difficult to detect at times, but an internal control policy set place where everybody is collectively, the city that has, is collectively involved would mitigate this task, which, what it means in general is, you can't have, you gotta, when you have an internal control policy, you have to follow it. Somebody collectively can't override that control and go off and say, we're doing it this way, okay? So you gotta collectively, as a city, follow the internal control policy. The League of Minnesota Cities has an example of internal control policies that you guys can have, but that is an issue here, okay? So you gotta collectively all be on the same page. Preparation of financial statements and related footnotes. This issue is there just because you outsource your financial statement preparations, you have an accounting firm do it for you, okay? Ninety percent of cities of your size do this, because you don't have a staff here that can prepare up-to-date financial statements with the required notes in lines of the state auditor's office, it'd be very expensive for you to have that here, okay? So you decide to outsource. That is a deficiency in your internal control, because auditors, we audit on a test basis, okay? We prepare financial statements, we don't look at every transaction, we do a sample selection, and if you had in-house your financial statements, there might be an issue where you guys would become aware of it, where we didn't, we, we, we didn't test it, basically, okay? So, that's a deficiency, but for your cost benefit, you should always have an auditor, you know, will prepare your financial statements. Page ten, there's required communication between the auditor and board charge of governance, which is you guys. It has to do with our, we have to disclose any uncorrected misstatements that we have, any disagreements with management, any issues that came about during our audit, we had no, no discrepancies, no issues. We, we like questions, okay? We like questions before we give presentations, because during, this presentation's more for a overview, then I can answer questions, because I don't, I don't know every answer right off the top of my head. I have, you know, sixty-five cities we're doing at the same time, they're kind of much, so we like to kind of do it together, but we had no issue with you guys as far as management or any member of your council, so. Your, your staff did a great job, by the way, it was very, very clean, we had minor germs, if we had material germs, they'd be required to be in here. Nothing was material, which means that we don't have to dispose it, it's, it's very uncommon for a city of your size not to have material germs, and it was great, it was good, okay? City of Kettle River has a lot of that, we know that, right? An overview, now, we were asked to kind of, what can the city do about it? There's different ways about refinancing, there's, you can increase rates, but obviously, as far as your property taxes, you're having a hard time collecting on the levy anyway, so you're in kind of a hard place, right? You're kind of a hard place of, what do we do now, right? We have it, now, you're starting to get traction a little bit, you're paying off your old stuff, okay? There are some bonding companies that will consolidate and save you interest, but looking at your interest percentage, it all depends on the bond. It all depends on if you can save a few percent by consolidating, but that is the only option besides raising rates I can, I can offer you guys on that. So, I wish I had more answers, but I mean, it's, you're a small city, and with the demographic that you guys have, it's very hard to decide if you raise your levy, how that, the reaction of that's gonna be over these rates, so. I would maybe suggest a feasibility study, and you guys had one of those before, whether your rates are in line with the, they're expensive, that's the only reason why I, you know.
We just had, we looked at by, I think it was Midwest.
Okay.
Called rural water, but the regional.
Okay.
And then we do use the rural water.
Okay, the rural water rate, yep.
And we have had, I wanna say it was like four years ago, had a financial advisor see if they could do anything with the bonding, but our rates are picked up, so they weren't worth it.
Okay. And how the bonding companies work is they require a audit, they look at how profitable you are, how much money you have to pay the loans, I mean, it's just, it's kind of like a business. How much cash flow you have available to, you know, pay off this new refinancing home, you know, so it's, 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 it's gonna be hard to free up any more money, I guess, with all these things.
Question, can you say a little bit more about, explain on page seven, the management override controls, I'm not quite understanding what that means.
What that means is, as a council member, you, you, as a council, you guys have to have, you know, collectively on the same page with everything that's going on in the city, right? You, if you're gonna say one person, you guys wanna review the bank statement, you, you, you have to say, you have to collectively say, okay, now, you know, council number A and B are gonna review the bank statement every month, okay? Can't give out online access, can't write checks yourself, you can't do that, you have to follow the same procedure every time, otherwise you're overriding everything, and no goodness is due if one person has control. So it has to be collectively together.
This is when we would have a internal controls policy in place.
No, this is me noticing what happened here, of our fault, yeah, we noticed that there's different things that happen in here, we're saying, how would this happen? Okay, is there any control policy in place? No, okay, well, was this a collective decision by the council? Okay, we might have an issue here, if this can happen.
So what you're suggesting is a, is an internal.
Internal control policy in place? Yep, so that we, everyone is, on the city's on the same page, you know? You know, the council reviews X, Y, Z every, every month, no one has access to this account, but so-and-so, I mean, just collectively, everyone's on the same page, if it makes sense. Otherwise, if you have, you're not on the same page, it'd be completely override any controls that you have in place.
Debt sucks, okay? It appears that.
Yep, you have three pages, especially.
Yeah, it appears that when all is said and done, that with principal and interest, over the next thirty-something years, it looks like there's gonna be close to over nine-hundred-thousand dollars in debt that will have been paid.
You got that right, on page seventeen of your audit, yes.
Okay.
Lowering your interest rate is, is possible, but it depends on.
Yeah, yeah, it may or may not, I don't know how that works, you know, but we're, we're in trouble with the enterprise fund, proprietary fund, with a need for a, a, a new water tower refurbishment. To the tune of, the latest estimate is about seven-thousand dollars, so. So what we're looking at, as far as I can see from what you wrote down in the audit, we paid off thirty-nine-thousand dollars' worth of principal, or is that principal and interest on page twenty-three?
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
What would you like to know, a cash flow, or would you like to know what you?
That's the best way of managing our debt, you know, I mean, we're taking one step forward and then two steps back, it seems, we're, you know, we're having the.
Yeah, starting from nineteen ninety-nine, the city has a lot of outstanding debts, two thousand and five was the biggest project, but last year, if you're looking at total principal paid down, your debt, you paid down twelve-thousand dollars in your enterprise loans, okay?
Right.
Which in comparison to the interest paid, is, you're not, it's like a house loan, right? You're not, you're not, you're paying way more interest and more principal right now.
Right.
So.
But, and, and if we were to get a, a bond, or a loan for refurbishing of the tank, that would necessarily need to be attached to the proprietary fund?
Yes.
That's already in the hole?
Yep.
Okay.
So the other option is raise rates, right, or in?
My highest, it's my highest utility.
I can't, yeah, I, I just.
Yep, all right.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I, no, I just wanna hear the music, you know, it's, it's not a good, it's not.
Not good music, no.
No, it's not, but I just want, you know, wanna be clear on, you know, what we're dealing on, you know, but I appreciate the frankness that only an accountant can give, yeah.
I'm curious, question, are there any grants available?
Well, there is, there were, we, we kind of missed the boat on that one. I've been talking to a couple of people about it, but resourcing is coming up a little bit shy.
What engineer are you working with?
MSA, they're not, I, I got a phone call into them, and an email into them, and, and they were supposed to come up with something here today, but they.
The PFA too, Public Facilities Board, Minnesota PFA?
I talked to, I talked to the Minnesota World Waters Association that, that mentioned the PFA, you know.
They're, they work with, of all, or, or smaller cities, I would say ninety percent have a PFA loan available.
Right, and, and, yeah, I discussed that with, it's, as I say, through Minnesota World Waters, there's a, an agent down there.
You want a grant, though, which means.
Yeah, we want, we have some money.
You don't wanna pay it back, right?
Gary, help us out.
Right?
I get it, I get it.
You want part of that state surplus here?
Yeah, yeah, just our part, you know, I mean, we're just, we're only a hundred-and-fifty votes, so they're not gonna pay too much attention to us, but our local politicians might be able to help us out, as what I'm hoping to deck. I don't know, I, I, I just wanted to hear it, where, so.
Yep, and we're not at the, we're not at the point now where, you know, you guys are, each year, we have to look at whether you're going to concern, which means you can make it in another year, you're not at the point now where you're freeing up some stuff, where it's, you're starting to make cash flow, okay? Or, you know, it's, it was tough, you know, we've been around here for two years, and when we got it, it was kind of a nip year, but in the last couple of years, you can eat more and more every year.
That segregation between the proprietary and the general fund is, is kind of aching.
Yes, yes, generally speaking, if you have to use general fund money to fund proprietary activity, it's not, it's not an ideal situation.
I don't know.
Your proprietary activity should pay for itself, and then it should offset any kind of future plans that you had for it, so.
Is it by law, or is that just by?
It, no, it's, it's not by the law per se, but it's designed, proprietary activity should be like its own part, because you're, it's not part of the levy, right?
Right.
So.
But it would seem you've got more in that bucket than in that bucket, that hole, whatever.
Not all the residents are on.
I didn't, so there'd be non-payers, that would be.
That's the, that's why it's not.
Popular.
Popular with the state auditor or residents.
The auditor would be.
The auditor does not, I can see that. Right now, you're.
So that's not a possibility, that's, it, you're, that wouldn't be your recommendation at all?
No. Nope, they should be self-driven.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. President, Chris, is there any of these kind of projects that get into the state bonding bill? Actually, you just.
Because I mean, I'm concerned about what?
Here's an example, we have a city that did a million-dollar water and sewer project, now it sounds like a lot, okay, but it was a population of six-hundred people, so, you know, figure me, okay? And with the new bonding bill, they actually got four-hundred-thousand dollars forgiven of that bond because of the new bonding bill, okay? So that, for instance, yes, it's out there, but it is a long process to get involved in that, so you have to start early, you can't just, you can't just come on right away, you kind of have a plan, engineers help with that. But you're asking, yes, is it, is some funding there? Absolutely, it's there, it's just whether you qualify for it, you know, that's a good question.
Hey, Ben, have you done some work with the initiative foundation before? For, what you do in some of those, do they have any connections that maybe could help facilitate that process, or that, get that moving forward?
As far as the, we have no water tower, yeah.
Cause it's done projects like that over a period with some other areas as well.
Mostly what you find is, we have no water towers, maintenance, bad money, that's a lot of fun.
That's a health and safety issue as well, though.
Well, that's, you can try to tie that in, but.
To clean water.
Yeah, but it, we don't really have a problem, because ours, Department of Health is stating it's aesthetic, it's not a health issue.
What kind of timeline do we see on our current tour right now, first, that we can work with what we currently have?
Well, I don't know if you've turned on a tap lately from the town, but it's, 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 it's a, it's a nagging, significant problem. And so, people wanted it fixed, I personally would like it to have been fixed yesterday, it's, and it's not fixing itself, and it, and we're not getting too much response from contractors that we've, and so, yeah, yesterday, or even a year from now, would be, would be good too, you know, I mean, but. I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic here.
Okay, what about your part?
All right, go ahead.
I'm gonna do it tomorrow.
Okay.
That's the do it, you're pretty, you're recording, I, I read through this afternoon.
Yes.
You say the adoption of a comprehensive fund balance on page nine, the city is not adhering to the recommendations in G A S B fifty-four, establishing a delta comprehensive and.
Yeah, that was the prior year.
We looked at it up to the current year, that was a prior year finding.
Okay, that was prior.
Yep, we just kept it as a, a management note, or internal comment this year.
Okay.
Okay, so, you're fine.
Yeah, there's no, there's no other classifications or, or fund balance categories, meaning the. Yeah, there's no, there's no other classifications or, or fund balance categories, meaning the train?
Nope, 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 um, just be aware, like, we would, we would recommend if, um, like, we talked about your general fund, um, cash balance, if there was a surplus there, the state auditor's office doesn't like to see money just sitting around, you have to commit it or assign it for s- future projects. Uh, the difference between a commit and assign, commit is, uh, uh, board designated, a council designated, okay? Uh, assign is just kind of a, off the, off the not formal budget, okay, for the fire, we know that the fire is assigned for this stuff, okay? We know that, um, the money for parks is there for parks, okay? Commit means, we're gonna commit twenty-five thousand dollars for a fire truck, okay? You cannot, the city cannot spend that twenty-five thousand for anything but a fire truck unless you guys decide again to remove it or add to it or spend it, okay? So it's just a different budgeting tool.
Just, I, I guess, I was just reading that.
No, that's a good question.
Yeah, and our, our, our fund balances at the end of the year are changed drastically by the end of January though, too, because we have a lot of, uh, bills due at the beginning of the year.
Some big death ones, the one in January, there's twenty thousand dollar one, um, that is freed up in nineteen, that's good, but it's, January is top one, twenty one, so.
Right, and so, um, do we get a, uh, do they average you have a, a fund balance, or, or, uh, an interval, or a, an update of a fund balance at all, or how does that happen?
Fund balance is basically a-
Like a six-months or anything?
Yep, I mean, the city has financial statements that you can, the fund balance is your cash balance.
Right.
Um, the committed balance would be separate from that, you can say, okay, we have the two hundred dollars that we have, we're gonna commit twenty-five thousand for this. Um, for your fund, um, you can look at your financial records, um, anytime, it'll be with the reason of what you have available for cash, so.
And from our financial records, is basically our ca- our bank account?
That's what cash basis is, yep, it's just basically unbalancing your cash. That's why it's nice for small cities, because you don't have receivable payables, everything bulked, pension liabilities, you don't have to do that, it's just strictly, just having a bank account, right, available.
Right, so at the end, you, and that, that down, could be pretty much your-
Pretty much, yep. The only tricky part is which funds that cash belongs to, water, sewer, fire, you know, that's the tricky part, and you're, you're clicking more than happy with all of that.
Got you, alright, appreciate you coming out, I've been most of the time.
You guys gotta stop talking about accounting now, it's gonna happen.
Alright, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Good meeting.
Thank you, right. Okay, so are, keeping up with the tradition as far as our guest role, Gary, you're up.
Well, it's good to see everybody, I can't stay seated, right? The others, please. Today at our board meeting, we, we talked about Carroll River, so I decided, uh, to come out tonight, and I know Todd's gonna go over some things here, so I'll kind of leave that to Todd, what he's gonna talk about, then we went over at our board meeting today, but I was likely to run and share what's going on in the county and, and maybe answer any questions that you might have on things. Some of the things that, uh, that I've been working on is last week, I went down to, uh, we, we were trying to get a meeting with the governor, but he was busy, so we met with his chief of staff, and we met with the speaker of the house, and quite a few of the legislators, and there was six counties there, I was representing Carroll County, but we were down there to talk about line three, you know, the Enbridge pipeline thing, and, uh, that decision should be coming from the P U C, um, the Public Utilities Commission in June, you know, that decision should be coming out, and, uh, I know we've been working on that thing for six years or longer, and, and, uh, so we're hoping for a, a good decision, the judge has already said that line three has to be replaced, you know, they, Enbridge spent a lot of time in maintenance on it, I think it was put in around nineteen sixty, and so it needs to come out, this one judge, I don't know if you heard, said that they should put the pipe in the same spot where the line three is already located, and, um, six of us commissioners were there where the pipeline is supposed to go through, we, we told them that was a very dumb decision, cause that line three pipe is in with seven other pipes, and it's not on the edge, it's on, it's in the middle or there, how can you take that pipe out of the ground without damaging the pipes around it and dragging equipment on it, and, and I don't think the judge even, you know, looked at that, and, uh, but we were just talking about that we think it's the preferred route that would come right across Carroll County, you know, pretty much my whole district, and, um, so we, we talked about the reasons that we were for it, all of us were for it, and, uh, then we talked, um, quite a bit about if we do get approval on this, and Enbridge does start constructing this, that we're concerned about protesters, and you know, people have a right to protest in them, you know, law, they do it peacefully, but, I mean, we did have some protesters out here one, a month ago, you know, where they actually were trespassing on private property, they called our made defense, and, you know, our sheriff was out there, our deputies, and, and there was no damage done, no violence or anything like that, but we're, the thing that we brought up, if we start building this pipeline, we don't know what that's gonna cost Carroll County to deal with more law enforcement, and, and, uh, if we have issues and stuff like that, that could end up being a huge bill, we know what happened on that Standing Rock, you know, there was, I don't know how much it cost, you know, those counties dealing with that, and then we'll, we'll probably have some mutual, uh, agreements with other counties, I mean, other townships and, and counties to kind of help out, but we wanna really be proactive on this, and, and the legislators said that, so what can we do to help, you know, that, you know, our deputies aren't trained to deal with big demonstrations, you know, they never run into that stuff, really, and so we maybe need to provide some training, be proactive, you know, we need to have a good relationship with the tribe, uh, and, and work together with them, but, uh, that was a concern that we, we brought up, because, I mean, it could be a huge cost for the county, you know, to deal with this. The court case that we have going on, you know, this is another sidebar with Enbridge, is we don't do the assessing, you know, of these utilities that come through, the county, the state assesses Enbridge, they are our biggest property taxpayer, and, uh, Enbridge felt, just like any person here, you know, believes that they were overtaxed, so they went to court, and, and now, uh, there's supposed to be a decision coming down here in the next, you know, week, week and a half, on what's gonna happen on that. Mike Sandin, who's in, in the legislature right now, he introduced the bill that it's not the counties or the townships' fault for the overassessment, I mean, either though we do collect the money, but it's not our fault, cause we would have a couple of townships in Carroll County that would go bankrupt, you know, they couldn't, how would they pay them back? And, uh, but, uh, the one bill that was introduced, that it does get to this point, the state is the one that assesses, that the state would do the reimbursing, and not the county and the townships, I don't know where that's gonna go, but, uh, cause it could end up being quite a bit of money being paid back on that, so that, that's two things on Enbridge. We had a, a jail study done, you know, we have one of the oldest jails in, in Minnesota, and the way they designed it in nineteen seventy-nine, and then they added on in eighty-two, that they just don't design jails like that anymore. You know, it's, uh, jails today, the command center's located right in the middle, and the cell block is, is in a circular uh, fashion that you can actually see what's going on the whole time, I don't know if you've ever been in our jail?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, but, if you're just need someone in the jail, or, or doing a tour, you know, because, uh, you know, our deputies and our jail people give tours at different times, but it's, it's built really goofy, and the state of Minnesota, they have more and more rules now that they force on us, that our jail is not in compliance or this, that you have to do a vet check, I think, every half hour. Every half hour, you have to actually go, you gotta see that debris then, and, uh, it just, it's just a lot of demands put on by the state of Minnesota, and there's some jails in Minnesota, if they don't meet these, uh, these rules, they shut them down, or they make them, uh, you know, thirty-hour hold or whatever, but, so we, this is the study, and, uh, I'll be the first to tell you, jails are not popular to build, you know, jails are not popular. And so we're looking at options that we can do to reduce our numbers in jail, we, we're starting a program, um, that we saw from Blue Earth County, called the Yellow Line Program, I don't know if you've heard about this, but when someone gets picked up, you know, it's not a real violent crime, but before you cross that yellow line, you know, that we're trying to do something so you don't go into the jail, you know, and, uh, you know, trying to be more proactive, and, you know, we're not gonna deal with these problems by just throwing people in the jail, but it's a, it's a program that's trying to reduce your jail population, because if your jail population gets so big, then we have to pay and to keep our, our clients, our, our prisoners in other jails, and that, that can be a huge cost by transporting people to other jails and stuff like that, so if we can do different things to lower our jail population, and just come back and figure out if we're gonna build a jail down the road, you know, what size, because the consultant came back and said that, our jail right now is forty-eight beds, and this jail consultant came back, gave us a report, he says you should build a jail for a hundred and twelve. And I says, we're not gonna build a jail for a hundred and twelve, and, but he says you should build for a hundred and twelve. And I says, well, our population, according to everybody, we're not really gonna be growing in population, if we do these, you know, these, uh, diversion programs, you know, we don't need to build a hundred and twelve bed jail, you know? But we gotta do some, try these other programs up to see exactly where we're at, cause when they built that jail in seventy-nine, we didn't have as many women in jail as we do today, you know, when did the state hospital shut down? You know, because we're de-
Eighty-seven?
Maybe sixteen, twenty years?
See, see, the, the state hospital, once that shut down, where do you think we're dealing with a lot of mentally ill people, you know, the, in our jails? And we're not, you know, we're not equipped, you know, we're not equipped to deal with a lot of these things, you know? So we have that, and, uh, the other crisis that we have here is we have an opiate crisis. You know, we have, we have, uh, people, more people died last year from opiate deaths than we lost in Vietnam in one year. You know, we're losing a lot of people to these opiate problems that we have, so we're looking at programs to deal with this, we gotta get people into treatment, we gotta get people, so, we gotta be, it's a really hard problem, because a lot of people get addicted, you know, from doctors, over prescribing, and even a dentist, you know, my nephew went to the dentist, he came home, he was just sixteen years old, he came home with a bunch of uh, OxyContin for his, he got a tooth hole, you know, and, uh, you know, so we gotta be very, doctors, doctors were, were told that this stuff was safe, and right now, what we did decide to do with other counties is that Carroll County, we are suing the opiate companies that, that knew this stuff was addictive, and they were, they were marketing this stuff that it was safe, and, uh, so we're in with a bunch of other counties, you know, to deal with this opiate lawsuit that we're dealing with here, but this, this is a tough problem to deal with, it's really, it's really hard to get people off this stuff, it's so addictive, it's really hard, and some of them, some of them, they just got hurt playing football or something like, I hear young kids even, um, getting addicted to this stuff. So, I mean, that's something that we're dealing with, uh, the jail thing is, you know, we're looking at all different options that we can do to keep people out of jail, and work with them, we're looking at, we, we got, we're looking at buying a house, a home here in Carroll County, because people are coming home for treatment, and they have no place to sit in Carroll County. So we're looking at a place, it's kind of like a halfway house, but we'll have staff there to kind of work with them, you know? You know, a lot goes back to insurance companies, what they wanna pay for to send someone into treatment, and sending someone into treatment for thirty days, you think thirty days is gonna get somebody out of opiate addiction in thirty days? And, uh, but the insurance companies, that's all, that's all they'll pay, right, for sixty days or whatever, so, I mean, this is, it's really a tough problem to deal with. Have you been on, uh, we got a new website at Carroll County, if you looked at that, it's a much user-friendly, uh, compared to the other one we had, but it's, uh, I think it's, it's working out pretty good, it seems to me that it's a much better website. Uh, the governor had a buffer law, and we are the first county in Minnesota, we are one hundred percent compliance with the buffer law. The buffer law is that if you have a river, uh, a creek or something like that, it's mainly dealing with southern Minnesota, the western part, is the farmers are just farming with their soybeans and corn right up to the river, you know, so now, with the buffer law, is that you can put hay crops there and stuff like that, but not, you gotta have, I think, thirty feet or something like that, that you can't put that corn right next to the river or that soybeans, but we went through all of Carroll County here, and we are one hundred percent compliance with the buffer law here in Carroll County, so that was good, it was there. We constantly, uh, we constantly have a problem with beaver in the county, you know, they're just, they're not worth anything, you know, we don't got people. We gotta start wearing beaver hats, and, you know, we gotta, beaver jackets, and, you know, but they used to be worth a ton of money, I taught American history and they were war fought over that, that beaver, you know, they trapped the beaver out completely almost because there was so much money.
They got it and made their living off beaver.
Yeah, I mean, but we got, we're spending probably fifty thousand dollars a year trying to control beaver, you know, in Carroll County, and some of the townships are spending quite a bit too, and, and there are a couple of bills in the legislature to try and help reimburse townships and counties about, you know, dealing with the beaver problem, but they're just not worth anything, you know? Let's see here, um, it was a great winter, maybe not so much for us, but it was a great winter for our loggers. Great winter, we got caught up on a lot of our county land that, you know, some of the winters, it wasn't cold enough, it was freezing, but this, this was one of the best winters we've had. You can drive around the county, I just went by Schott's over here, you know, there's a lot of extra wood that got cut and piled up around the county, but it was a really great year for our loggers to get things done there. Um, road projects, luckily, we got a lot of our roads out for bids that have some sales tax that we put in a few years ago, is really paying off for us to be able to do some roads that, you know, we still have the money for, and, uh, but we're, there's certain roads, like Eagle Lake Road, we're gonna start on Sweet Lake Road, which is a really bad road, but, uh, the half cent sales taxes, when we first passed that half cent sales tax, when I first went around to my cities and townships and told them about it, I mean, I didn't want any new taxes, but the only other solution was, well, we don't want property taxes, we'll deal with these roads, and probably sixty percent of this sales tax is being paid by people that don't live here, that have, uh, you know, they have summer homes- that have, uh, you know, they have summer homes or they're traveling through our county, you know, as they're, as, and their health pain for these roads. We thought it was only gonna be a million, about a million and two, and right now, we're bringing in about two million or more off this half cent sales tax. And it's so darn expensive to do any kind of road projects today, it's unbelievable. But luckily we got our bids in just in time before that fire happened in Superior. Because if we wouldn't have got our bids in early, because of a lot of that stuff for asphalt and stuff comes out of Superior, because I just saw a couple guys that work for Northland, because we got some work on up here, it's gonna be a lot higher bid for us to do that stuff with that fire happening in Superior there. But, uh, uh, the other thing that's, I've been down to the legislature is, I represent the unorganized townships in the new Wright, Cromwell Wright Fire District. And, uh, we're, now we're not a district, yes, we're just kind of a joint powers, but we're trying to form a fire district over there with Cromwell Wright. We have our own levy authority and, you know, all the different things involved there. And I know fire districts are struggling, you know, fire departments are struggling. I see the ads that Austin Burgs been putting in the paper there about trying to get people to, you know, to volunteer for the fire stuff, so, working on that. And then the last thing I just wanted to, to mention, something that, uh, we talked about today a little bit and then at our community, the whole, is I've been talking to people from the American Lung Association. And what we have, we're just discussing, exploring, just to talk about it, it's called Tobacco Twenty-One. Have any of you ever heard about that? What's, what's going on with Tobacco Twenty-One is that these big tobacco companies now, they are targeting our young people. They are, they are marketing towards the kids in high school, middle school, you know? And what they're doing now is they're coming up with, you, you, you know what vaping is? You know, vaping, they, they juul, and now they even got a flash drive, you can't even see the smoke, that, that they, there was a big thing done with, up at Proctor and Dentel High School that was on the news down in the cities. But this, one of these juul things has about a whole pack of nicotine in it. And, uh, and this stuff is, uh, being used by middle school kids, you know, thirteen, fourteen, and, and so, all these different statistics and things like that, we're just discussing this right now. I mean, we haven't done anything, but we talked about whether or not as a county, some cities have done it, no counties in Minnesota have done it yet, but there are cities in Minnesota, some states have done it, where you have to be twenty-one to buy any nicotine product. You gotta be twenty-one years of age. And, uh, you know, hopefully that would keep it out of those thirteen, fourteen year olds, keep it out of the schools and stuff like that. It's kinda like, I was an eighteen year old drinker, you know? I remember what that was like. And eventually they moved it up to twenty-one, because the eighteen year olds, man, you could leave campus, go home, have a beer and come back to school and you were, you were legal.
I'm sure you're sixteen.
Right, I mean, it's, they say most people start using tobacco products before they're eighteen. And then, you know, and then when they get older, they'd like to, wish they never would have started. You know, my dad was a two pack a day guy, you know? And the problem is, we're punishing smokers today. Because you know what it costs for a pack of cigarettes? You know, about nine bucks, nine to ten dollars for a pack of cigarettes, you know? So it's gonna add up and, so we wanna be a healthy county and stuff like that. So it's something we're talking about, I don't know if your thoughts on that would be?
Old D deserves, uh, you know, here right now?
Eighteen, eighteen. But the military, because we had a presentation, not by the American Lung, in the military, all the branches don't want smokers. They're, they're, they're in favor of, of, uh, smoking.
Whether you're sixteen, eighteen, twenty-one, have a smoke or if you're a drinker, they're gonna get old, it's just a nature thing. You all want, the more you all want, the more you're gonna get attracted to it.
So, okay, um... And I was just discussing, you know, I, I'm sure like the eighteen year old, I think it would stop it harder to get down to thirteen, fourteen.
You could go die for your country, you can't have a pack of smokes or a sip of whiskey.
Yeah, well, maybe they might be veteran.
Who might be? Well, you could buy a gun at eighteen.
They're looking to change now.
You could buy, you could buy a rifle at eighteen and a handgun.
Like I said, it's just information. One, one thing I would ask you, next, on your next proposal down at the Capitol, is, uh, try to make the barrier to entry for volunteering on fire departments a little bit lower. It is outrageously high at this point. It's like, I don't know how many firefighter one classes you gotta go to, but it's like a hundred fifty hours or something like that worth of class, which is two days and thirty days, three hours a night for months. You know, so that is why, a big reason why our volunteerism and Austin Burgs putting, you know, things into, you know, where sometimes I've heard the siren go off twice because there's no response. Well, I'd like to tell me that, because I'll see some of the fire chiefs and all of them, you know? And I think it's not only isolated to Carlton County, but it's- Oh, yeah, it's, it's- It's everywhere. I don't mind this. I think the legislature has a, has a hand in this problem that we've run into. And not the volunteers. Okay, thank you. Jeff, you got it?
Sure, I guess I importantly come to speak there, just came to listen, but the, uh, I'll take it, my name Jeff Dazet, I'm actually running for state health eleven A, local resident here in Silver Township. And, uh, I agree, I think the pipeline is a big one, I know that Don's captain yesterday as well. And, uh, there's some proposals they actually picked with the new, uh, they already got Ethan's in place and they can move forward with it right now, all they gotta do is pass the vote and get it done.
That's right, yeah.
I think it's on the table, uh, they're, they're in the works, I, I feel quite positive that's gonna flow. I think the opioid is a, a big issue as well, I can piggyback on that. I think, uh, working with local law enforcement, I think you said other communities where they know how to handle it, manage it a little bit, and then to jump it on, they can see who's prescribing what, and how much should be actually entered here, and how much is being prescribed, so they can track it a lot better. You know, working with post office, et cetera, they can actually track it, see what's coming through the postal service as well. So I think there's some mechanisms in place, we just need to make sure the local community, we're working with all the right entities to do so. But, uh, I guess I, I got my cards available, if anyone has any question, but I value everyone's time, so, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call.
Appreciate it, okay. See that, um, go to the, we'll go to the consent agenda. I'm taking, uh, minutes of March thirteenth out of the consent agenda and look for a motion to, uh, to accept, uh, otherwise. Okay, here's your motion, we'll go on to the next one. Uh, reports for the administration department.
Um, basically just the regular replay data, the month of work.
Okay. Looks like Dave's not here, so we got his report here. I don't know if you have any questions, what you're gonna do with him, but, um, is Dave sick or?
He's at, um, his home.
Oh, okay. I gotcha. Fire and first responder, Kyle.
Yes, uh, this month so far we've had four fire runs and one medical. Uh, still waiting on, uh, the three new firefighters. Uh, there's pieces missing from each one of their applications, whether it's a drug test, uh, sign forms, uh, what have you. And I'd like to address that with the council a little bit. I'd like to see if we can shorten this process up.
What's the, what's the hitch?
It takes them a while, it takes people a while to get the doctor's appointment set up. Um, one of the boys is having trouble finding a notary in his off hours. By the time he gets done with work, banks are closed, so he has, he's having a hard time finding a, a notary. I'm trying to find one for him, but it's a struggle.
Bernardine, you couldn't do that, or?
I can't do one, but I could help you find it.
Okay.
First National Bank, they'll tell us, y'all.
Right, but he works all day, he doesn't have the ability.
My wife's a notary, just Facebooker, she'll do it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Also, um, I would like to speed up the process a little bit. Um, right now the process is, we interview the fire, the potential firefighter mayor and chief, and then they bring it to the city council for approval, and at that point, the packets go out with the forms that the potential firefighters fill out, get everything taken care of. Um, I'm proposing that maybe as long as the chief and the mayor agree that they're going to bring this firefighter to the council, if we could give them the packet then, so they can get a head start on it, make the doctor's appointments, getting things signed, taken care of. Because sometimes there's a big gap between an interview happens and the next city council meeting. And you're, you're in another month gap right there.
Well, um, I'd like to address that issue right now, does anybody have any problem with that? The explanation of the paperwork that it be given, you know, not being approved, but given to, so they can see at least what they're up against as far as information necessary. So, without objection, I think we can make that happen. I, would you guys agree?
Yeah, wholeheartedly, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so let that be part of the process then?
Yeah. Okay. Going forward?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I was, the, a couple things, in the packet I'd like to add, I don't know if I need to address that here or if I can just talk to Bernardine. Um, physical forms, Gateway's supposed to have it, but they never seem to know where it is. So I was just recommending that we, at every packet, we just include the double thing. That way, the onus isn't on them to remember where it is or what it is. And then a note from the city saying, "Don't send us back to physical, we just need you to fax us to this number passer app." Just instructions.
Yeah.
They're not in the packet right now, you know, we can just add that, that'd be most helpful.
Yeah, I, okay, without objection, let it make it happen.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, recruitment, can we put an avenue here, like Moose Lake did? For looking for more firefighters and first responders? Um, Facebook hasn't been very helpful. And Twitter?
Or Snapchat?
Yeah, you know, I tried, I've tried plenty avenues as I'm able, and, um, everybody gets, you know, like a mini paper, mini paper.
Salvation, Kyle, why don't you put the sign right up front of the city halter? We get so much traffic going by that might be-
That's not, that's not-
Real offensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you've got a paper, don't you? I, I've put it in my telegraph room since in the past, I don't know that it's done any good, but I can put it in again or continue to put it in.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, any, any word out on the street?
A little ad would be good too.
Just one, one time, yeah. We've got a logo and stuff, we can put it on there and see if we can get it. Even just a couple people would be helpful. Along the lines of recruitment, I do have a proposal I'd like to present to you guys. It's not a new idea, but it is a little changed from the last time it was presented to you guys. I apologize for not getting this to you sooner. I'm here. That'll be your record. Uh, looking to see if the city council will be willing to, uh, start paying firefighters on a per call basis. It's not an uncommon thing, uh, and I think it would help with recruitment, number one, and number two with repent, or, you know, keeping guys. It's hard to ask somebody to get up at three AM when the danger goes off, when, uh, you know, they're not getting any compensation for their time or their efforts in that sense. Moose Lake pays their guys. Uh, Barnum does not pay their firefighters at this time, but they pay their first responders, because the volume of their first responder call is so much higher than the fighter. I'm suggesting five dollars an hour to start. There's an ordinance already in the city ordinance about minimum pay for an hour every run. I'm also asking that first responders be included, because they make just as many runs, if not more. I did do a little math in here, as you can see, that was as a four twenty-one.
Would you, what, what would the percentage increase in, uh, responders to the fire?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know, so do it.
I think, I don't know, I think at the beginning of the year I asked for each, uh, on the reports that, on the, on the side here, that, you know, how many people respond if to each run.
I don't want to put in our own report for you. I'm not sure if it's still in, if it's in there anymore.
Just so I can visualize, see how many, how many responders are going to each run.
Sure, we have a run board on, in the hall as well, if you'd like to take a look. It shows who makes what run.
Well, they do know that, you know, if somehow our fire department longer exists, their fire insurance is gonna go up. So I think that's a heck of a turn for them to maybe, you know, your property insurance is gonna go sky high, because we don't have any fire departments besides Moose Lake and Barnum, that's, that's in the area, so, if I could, I would, but I can't.
Kyle, you've talked about approaching some of the ones that used to be on the purple, did they consider coming back?
No.
I have not, or maybe you don't want to, I've stayed out of that.
The, uh, the discussion has been, and there's other townships in Gary, you may have heard of this in other areas, but in a state whereby retired firefighters would be, and I would be of this ilk as well, be willing to, um, do everything except get in the hot zone. That is basically run the pump, drive truck, uh, tote water, um, drag hose outside of the, as they call the hot zone, the place that you wear a helmet and turn up here and whatever, the, the danger zone, basically. But everything other than that, uh, would be handled or on a voluntary basis by firefighters retired. I know that it has, it is happening in other localities, and, um, it's something that might be thought about as being an option, what you kind of analogize, what you suggest. Because there is a problem with the, there is money involved, you know? And then so there's retirement, the state is a part of it, the city is a part of it, and so it gets to be a, a county nightmare, and we could ask Chris if he was here about that, but, um, yeah.
Um, I gave the information to me, uh, of that program.
Okay, I did not get that, so.
Yeah, people that don't go into the fire, but they do everything else, and you guys have it that way? Or does everybody go into the fire?
Well, until you're training, so you get your firefighter one, you can't go in the hot zone. You can be on the, like, all of our new recruits will may come on now, they'll be able to do everything but go into the hot zone.
Yeah, but some of them are, reach a certain age, or they just, they don't go in there anymore, they're doing all the other stuff, you know? Still, they will have completed firefighter one at that point, you know, but, and there is some grandfathering of training involved, you know, and everything like that. It's a lot harder today than it was twenty years ago.
Oh, yeah, right.
To be a fire, to be a volunteer, so. But anyway, uh, yeah, if you could follow up on that, like, I don't know what you'd call it, you know, that, uh, retiree, uh, uh, volunteerism, I-
I can do that. I would appreciate if you guys would consider this, uh, regardless of that. I think it would help.
What's the, what's the, um, census of? What is, how much, how many firefighters do we have?
Active right now?
Yeah.
Six.
Kyle, how many actual fires do you have, master, how much would that really increase our budget? Do you think that would increase?
I would say not too much, I mean, if you look at, through April 21st, you're looking at, we got 15 fire runs, 37 people responded. So you're looking at 185 dollars total. And 11 first responder runs, and I just, there's only three active first responders, so I just assumed we all made every call, which is not the case. That would be 165 dollars, so you're looking at
You're only calling this as one call?
Correct, most of our calls, most of our calls are not longer than that. We may have one or two a year that get longer than that maybe. And with the new dispatch system that, how many have started? I get an email when the calls are wrapped up, what's the exact times when we radio in and say we're clearing the scene. So there's no question about how long our call was. I mean, it's all mapped out in an email, and actually a PDF form for us after every call, so it's really easy to track exact call times now. Makes a recording.
So is that from when the call comes into the fire call, or from when they're on scene?
As far as.
As response time?
I can see when, I can see when the 911 came in, I can see when we were paged.
But for as far as paying the firefighter, is it as soon as they get into the hall, does this time start if they leave?
I would say when we're in rounds, which we let, or we know when we're in rounds, they need to know that.
Yeah. But I guess, I just wonder, like, if you come in and you don't have, go anywhere, you're still going to pay them the minimum five, it's just a question.
That's a great question, we consider it a call right now, if we get paged and we come here and then Moose Lake says stand by. We call, we consider that a call, because we left what we were doing, we dropped what we were doing to get over here, just in case. I think that's worth something.
Yeah, you answered the bell, you should.
You answered the bell, you should get credit for it, you should get paid that hour.
Just a question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Okay. Is that all you got?
Um, yeah. Sorry, I was loading up.
It is the biggest department in the city, though.
Um, just to let you guys know, we are switching to meetings month, versus just our one. Decided with the We lost a lot of our veterans recently, George included, and we have a lot of guys who are fairly green on the department that we, we all felt we could use extra practice, extra training. So we're going to meet the first Tuesday as we usually do, and then the third Thursday. We're going to do a lot of hands-on, a lot of practical, just so we can get more comfortable actually putting the wet stuff on their ass. So, that's just in the wire. And with that, I.
Do you, are you keeping track of the training, Kyle?
Yes.
As far as, because we are supposed to have some kind of a training report, and I just haven't noticed, or maybe I'm not looking right. Maybe I'm not looking right. Why just find the run reports and the meeting attendance? Does that, maybe I'm not finding.
Yeah, maybe I didn't print that.
I usually, usually it's a firefighter by firefighter breakdown, what training they had all year, what fire department.
We need further in.
I usually just print the summary.
Oh?
Because I'm going for runs is basically.
Yeah, I can get to that information, the report you sent to me has that detail, but it's individual.
Okay. Oh, okay.
We could track every firefighter's training throughout the year.
Yeah.
Also, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. Isaac Graham has agreed to be assistant chief for the time, and Tom Sidney has agreed to be a training officer moving forward. Wouldn't be proven for me to continue being a training officer while having chief duties. So, those two guys have stepped up in place and offered.
You mean what?
They'll be the training officer. And not helping with that.
Is it in your room?
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming this is all inter-rigged, because I don't have any other, I don't have any other direction. But I didn't want to be the sole person doing everything on firefighter.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it, good work. Building Department.
No, it's quiet, I think all the hail damage that's going to get done is done. I think, at least nobody's asked for a permit.
Pretty quiet.
Okay, City Council.
Bernardine?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, just the appointments, were you going to move on those, or are you making motion?
City Council? I, I guess I am kind of dis, I guess, I'm kind of disappointed that we haven't heard anything from MSA. Yeah.
I have a contract here for you to sign up to the meeting.
Oh.
From what was approved last week, and then they said they would have the quotes available at the June meeting.
So.
For presentation.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, you know, because I called, I called Miller and I emailed him, and he finally returned my call. And he said, "I hope to have something by the next meeting," and this was three, two weeks ago. Then I emailed him last Wednesday, and I said, you know, "Looking forward to, if possible, having something on next, by next Tuesday." And I didn't hear squat from him, I had it totally silent. With this being an indication of the responsiveness of the engineer, that's kind of a red flag for me. Number two, getting kind of antsy. They mentioned McGuire Iron, which we have dealt with in the past, we have a contract for, for for maintenance, and I wish Dave was here, because there are some things that I'd like to run by with him with this, but so McGuire Iron is very, very, very responsive to me, and I only made three copies, but this is the inspection report from, from two years ago, 2016. And in it, they have a pretty detailed description of what the, what, what they found, you know, in the thing, as well as a recommend, as well as recommendations for, for improvements. This was dated almost two years ago to the date, 5/14/2016. They talked about interior painting, the tune of 33 to 36 grand, exterior painting, 34 to 36 grand. Chad Edwards is the guy that I spoke with on the telephone, he was very responsive, and he was kind of of the mind, "Why are you going to the engineer, we can do everything, the engineer, all that he does," you know, he talked about 25 to 35 mils of triple coated interior epoxy paint, sandblasting it down, making a standpipe basically for the, so that sediment doesn't get into the feed of the, of the thing, you know, basically giving it the, the once, you know, what we're looking at MSA to provide for, but MSA isn't providing anything, all they are is writing the stuff, you know? And they talk about, they talk about in here the OSHA compliance, that they're not compliant here, we're not compliant, not compliant, with the ladders, roof hatch, second access, and this is what they do, you know? I mean, it's a five-page report that, you know, thinking about it and looking at what we've got from MSA, they promised to submit a poll to these guys who basically could give us a poll, and save 15 grand of the, of the engineer's fees that they're going to charge on top of what McGuire Iron. Why would we, why would we do that, you know? Because, like I said, I've talked to other mayors in the state, and that's, this is what they do, they said, "Go to McGuire Iron, they do a good job." KLM, you know, that was another place that did a good job. And also, when we, when we took on advisement from the staff that was involved with this before, they were saying that the funding that was offered by Cliff Allen was only for new tanks. Well, that wasn't the case, it's not for just new tanks, he said it was for refurbishments as well. So, you know, we missed the May 4th deadline for, for grant applications or funding applications, and and I, we can do this for cheaper than, than we decided that would be. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, there's a little bit of confusion, because they brought that report prior. You stated you didn't want to go with that, you wanted another estimate, and then the only way to get another estimate was to contract with an engineer to get specs. So there's confusion here.
I'm confused. Well, the.
That was your direction.
This, I've never seen this before. I've never seen this before.
It was on a folder in the table, it's been on. It was binded in the green folder, it's been preserved.
This 2016 report? I've never seen this before. I've never seen this before. You know, so, if you guys want to go with MSA, which we voted on last, which we voted on last meeting, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's okay, but you know, I mean, these guys know our, know our tank, and we could save the engineer's cost as well. He gave me a price, you know, just off the top of his head, he could do the interior with the coating for oh, let me see, I wrote it down. Interior and roof for 45K with a 12 to 15 mil coating, that'd be triple coated. Inside and out, that's the outs, the exterior of the, of the tower, as well as the in, 80,000 towers. So, I, you know, like I say, I'm not real happy with the lack of response from the firm, MSA, the engineering firm, and these guys do tanks too, they come from other places, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I'm thinking the ball is already rolling on for MSA, how do you just stop it? I mean, all things take time, it's not something that you're going to ask, but one day it's going to be done tomorrow. It just doesn't work that way, there's a process.
So tell that to Don, tell that to Don Tracy.
George, you can't expect to have things done overnight.
I understand that, but I'm not talking about getting them done necessarily overnight, I'm talking about yeah, maybe a little bit quicker, but saving 15 large, that's, that's, you know, on the, on the engineering end of things. These guys do tanks, you know, they're guaranteed 15 to 30 mils, I mean, if you want then we want, I've got KLM, that is a second bid, you know?
What was their?
They haven't been, lately, this is 2016, they could.
Joe, he's ready to, this gentleman, Chad Edwards, and the guy from KLM is ready to come here and present, you know, their, what they can do for our town.
Is it going to be the same apples and apples? That's what we had MSA throwing up?
For, okay, if you want, if you guys want to go with. I know, but all I'm saying is that there's a, there's a cheaper, and I think the same apples to apples deal going on here.
Well, one, one company might think something is different, and might not do something another company might do, and and so they're not going to have the same, "This is what you need to do, and this is."
The specs is what they need to make a bid, basically, wouldn't you think?
Well.
More likely, well.
K, K, KLM said, and I trust them, they showed me a picture, I don't know, but they said that they were in our tank in 2011. McGuire has been in our tank as well for 2014 and 2016, for 1,700 dollars, and they know what's going on. So, you know, certainly, we made a motion and went with MSA, but what I'm saying is that I'm having a little bit of reservation about their lack of responsiveness, and it looks like we can maybe save a couple bucks. That's all I'm saying. And these are the guys that do the work. The engineer, I don't know exactly what he does, except for right specs and bids, you know, I mean, it's a vessel, it's a 50,000 gallon vessel that needs coating inside, it's sandblasted and coating inside. It's got some structural issues around the OSHA ladder and such like that, I understand that, we need to address maybe, you know, yeah.
I just want to clarify that MSA has been on site, and they've been contacting staff with questions, so they're having response. I'd have to check the date when they were here, and Ryan's called me several days, several times within the last couple weeks emails. I know he's been in touch with Dave several times.
So he, and I asked you, I emailed you, and I said, "Any updates on the water tower?" And you said they'll be presented at the next meeting, so why am I not told?
Well, I guess, I don't consider that an update, they're working on what they were instructed to do. I just wanted to clarify the statement that they were being.
So they were here within the past two weeks?
I think it was like the last week of people.
You think it was? Were they here or not? Well, I don't know, because you said last.
I just said the statement, they were here. Do you remember that day you came?
Yeah.
They were here.
They're in the factory.
Okay.
I don't know what day it was, but I can't tell you, I think stopping once, once a week maybe.
Well, I sent you an email subsequent to that and asked about an update of the water tower, and you said that they.
Well, there wasn't an update, they were not going to have change, they were just gathering information.
So you didn't even tell me that they were here, you.
How, I don't understand.
Why didn't you tell me that they were here, that they looked at it and whatever?
Oh, okay, I guess I didn't consider that an update. Nothing changed.
This is the first I've heard that they've even been on site, I, because I talked with Brian on the phone, and he said, he didn't mention that he was up here.
Brian wasn't, it was some other reps just came to, you know, ask questions and go over things. Let us know if we needed any.
So why, why is the, why is it a big secret?
It's not a secret, there was nothing that changed.
I wanted an update so I could tell Don Tracy, who showed up at the meeting, John Wintiezak, who showed up at the meeting, my, my wife that has sludge water coming out of her tap, that we're doing something, and I, I asked you, and you didn't tell me. What is that?
I guess I don't understand your question.
Why didn't you tell me that there was something going on with the water tower when I specifically asked you for an update?
Because nothing has been changed with water tower.
Bottom line is, is that we need some action in the, in the, as, as, you know, as expeditiously and judiciously as we can get. I'm saying that by going out to a couple of engineers, getting a couple bids, that we can maybe save 15 grand. That's, that's well on our way to a new truck or something else that we could spend 15 grand on. That's all I'm saying, if you guys want, try to ride, let MSA do their thing, and maybe come up with something in a couple months. I'd like to, I'd like to explore other options myself. I'd like to make a motion to bid out to McGuire and KLM, our tank project, and I'd look for a second.
I need clarification on the motion, bid out.
Well, this guy is, is ready to come and talk to us about what we need from McGuire, who's very familiar. What's that?
Is there cost, is people coming?
No, he said he'd come on here and talk to the, to the council.
I thought motions were needed.
Oh, yeah, they are, you're completely right.
You're right, you're right, okay. Good idea, all right. Any other thing from the city council? Committees?
Okay, committees, the personnel, was the, the thing that you did with the employees was that? Okay, committees of the personnel was the, the thing that you did with the employees, was that concluded?
What thing with employees?
Well, was the investigation job?
Uh, their report just being filed.
Anything else with committees?
Would we present it perhaps at the next meeting?
It has to be four of us.
No.
Yes, I talked to McGuire.
There's a lawyer.
No, I talked to the city order to-
When do you?
And present it to the council members without your presence. Do as a group, regular meeting, close it, come back out of it, say what we briefly talked about, and then present it to you. That's how I was instructed by the city order to handle it.
When was this?
Two weeks ago, I talked about our, about the ordinances that, I don't know, did he give back to you yet for anything? About the ordinance?
No, I don't see it.
Maybe they'll write something up. Our ordinances.
So, like the next meeting and those that-
No, it'll be-
Oh, a special meeting?
Yeah. All right, discuss our report.
Uh, Ministry of Fine Ordinance.
Yeah, I'm waiting on lawyers. She is, he is supposed to write something up to decide for me.
Okay, letter from Cam Whitmore. Any reactions?
So, I just don't recall instructing, agreed that we didn't want them, want to utilize Bob's services. Did we do that?
I was gonna bring up the exact same thing. I never did.
Do you recall?
No, I, I-
I thought it was me.
No, I don't recall that at all. And I looked through January and I didn't see anything in January meeting.
No, I didn't either.
So, yeah.
Would it be December, January, maybe, before?
Yeah, that's-
I'm not sure. But I don't recall us ever not wanting this. As assistance. Maybe we just didn't need it at the time. Not, just not saying I didn't want it.
So, Lonnie knows what this is about?
Well, council members can do that.
I spoke with him.
I spoke with him on a, on a case.
Well, it just says Bob, this will drop just kind of over January. We got some council number. Proper service. I, I never met him.
Who was the council? Was that you?
I said it, it's me.
Oh, you spoke with him, but you guys together spoke with him, okay.
Well, he spoke with me.
Oh, it said, and, and-
I think it's much help from the guard. I don't get it. He paid for it. It was your help. I don't know.
Any other reactions from that?
Well, I guess, I guess when I spoke with him, he said he had an appointment with you to talk to you that-
Yeah, and I, I, I-
Blew it off or?
No, I didn't want him to leave. But I, I forgot about it and I, I had very little expectations. And I, I apologized to him afterwards that I forgot about it.
Well, I think, you know, we're first use of assistance to what you have to say. City manager, public finance consultants, background on funding, finance, quality review, general management. I don't see why it would maybe help us out with the water tower issue. At least for, for starters. Where you guys are.
Do you want anything?
I want to do.
Oh, okay. Letter from Nordstrom Sentation thanking us to be customers that are changing the color of their vehicles, I guess. You're welcome.
Did they say if they're going to increase the?
They haven't. Yeah, we haven't received anything. Other engineers will still have to see the delta back there. As far as you know, as far as I know.
And then there's an email from the, this is Chris Plathens', associate Susan. She was very helpful in answering questions that I get off the audience. Okay.
Well, we got, last time we was on the meeting, we were working on continuing the economic development of our town. We had introduced a letter from Federated Co-ops who committed to build a gas, trail, gas source up on the trail. It's not for cars, but it would cover snowmobiles and four-wheelers to help bring more traffic out here. The reason that this part of the trail is dead, people go for Moose Lake. Lawler doesn't have gas. There's nothing until you get to the break. People can't get air for their tires or gas to go anywhere. But by adding gas here, we're opening up the west. So, it's customer of the world. Along with the economic development, an opportunity just came up. Been pestering Greg Benowen, Mr. Peterson, for quite a while here to take and help us formulate the town a bit. We have the big lot on the corner that's the old school lot, a lot immediately north of that, and previous gas station lot across the street. In the past, it was offered to give that to the city, but if they did, all it could be is a park or, you know, we give it to a nonprofit. There's nothing to be raised, you know, to make money off it or to, to do any with it, water hookups and things like that. Greg and Gary have worked out a deal where we can actually purchase the land, all three lots for a thousand or less. We have to pay the transferance costs, so it wouldn't be over fifteen hundred dollars for forty thousand dollars of the property. We can take that money and if we sell the land, we sell it for development. If we sell the lot, that they're gonna dig in the ground in a year. It's not going to be for land speculators. Sorry, where it's going to be, you know, just for sale forever or somebody's backyard. It's going to be a convenience store or a, a gas station for cars. With that, we get the tax revenue coming from developed property, which is going to significantly up our budget. Plus, we get the water hookups, which help our water hookups with the three properties. That's, you know, three, we're talking ten years or thirty years, whether it costs ninety thousand dollars. Just those three lots would take ninety thousand off that nine hundred thousand dollars out of the water. So, that's some bright news that we got going. It was approved by the council board to take the next step. So, we're really looking forward to the council approving the purchase of land from the county, that we can sell it. As I said, we sell it for development. You know, the city's going to win for generations to come. I guess with that, I thank you.
One other thing, Kerry, I don't, I don't know if we have to approve, the city council has to approve or not?
It's, right now, it's just an interim thing. It's a volunteer, you just don't volunteer, so you're not, a member at this point.
Thanks, Nat.
Yeah, I got a question. What's the guarantee that somebody's going to come and buy them lots after you put in fifteen hundred bucks of money that the city does not have? Is somebody guaranteed going to come by them and develop them, or are they going to sit there and make it for another twenty years?
We will take and motivate selling. It's fifteen hundred dollars if we're giving forty thousand dollars with the property.
But if nobody gives you forty thousand dollars for that, that's a hundred bucks.
Forty thousand dollars with the property.
Gentlemen, it's a council issue. I appreciate your input. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We can sell these lots at, at a couple thousand.
We're good. We're good. Thank you. I appreciate it. But the, the question is, is that are they sellable? You know, I mean, is, is the deal, I, uh, nothing much sells quick in this town, if ever, you know, I mean, uh, so-
But at least it's brought to the city instead of the county. And it's not taxed now. It's not taxed when we get it. So, even if, if we can get afterwards worth this tax on the building on it, I think it's, I think it'd be a heck of a shame if we lose it.
I think we can get a better deal than that.
Don't you raise it too?
Do, do you have to sell it at a praised value or estimated value, or can you sell it for less?
I, I tell you what, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's up to the county to, and the city. The two principals here is what we're talking about. But anybody could buy it from the county, you know?
It has to go through an auction.
Right.
It's, it's, it's more difficult for the county to deal with this property than city limits. It's a lot easier if it's yours, you know?
Well, we kind of, but it's-
No, we've, we've spent a lot of money cleaning it up and-
Exactly, exactly. So, you should be motivated by that to sell it to us for a buck.
Well, we-
Right, you know, I, you know, it's a nice John Deere.
If we sold it to you for a dollar, I think there'd be limits on what you could do with it, you know? So, what we talked about today is that it'd be around a thousand dollars plus the closing pass, you know, you know, to get things recorded.
For all three lots?
Yeah, for all three. You'd end better than that.
Right, that's right. It's a generous offer, but, and we'll perhaps consider it, but, you know, at this point, I kind of like you guys mowing the lawn and, and with us. We got enough hours on our, on our lawn boards as it is, so, um, things don't move in this town. We got, we got problems. Spending more money.
Assets.
Spending more money.
It's called assets.
Assets. There's no, there's no cash flow.
There's no cash flow in the way it sits.
No.
Right?
So, we have, at least we have assets to borrow against.
Yeah, great.
Concept of budgeting and quotes and money.
Quotes for playground repair.
I didn't see any quotes in the package.
Yeah, he was hoping to have him by- Um, he was hoping to have him by the night, but he doesn't, he wasn't going to get in the range. So, he just wanted to keep it.
Yeah, I agree.
But wanted you aware of it. It is lifting to, it is a danger because of-
Right.
Yeah, I walked over there.
So, yeah, he'll get-
Yeah, let's move it to a business. Um, Kyle. Kyle, I would like to make a, a motion for Kyle's chief, what was it? Membership renewal form for ninety-three dollars.
What did, is it ninety-three or?
Ninety-three or fifty-seven. I didn't understand that word. Is that, is that membership thing that he gave us?
I don't know. I just thought fifty-one and the rest.
Says the primary chief director is ninety-three.
The first one's ninety-three.
Yeah.
And that's the only thing. I'm not asking for anybody else right now.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion.
What's for, what's it used for?
It's the Minnesota State Fire Chiefs Association. They provide training. They provide documentation. They, I went to their officer school that's here. I've been to, it was really good stuff, good training material. I'm hoping to get more of our guys to do these. Thank you. And being a member, please, it's a-
Provide free that, or you still have to?
No, we still got to pay for it, but you get the member price versus the non-member price. Which is still good.
So, one or two meetings will, or one to advance.
If not, more. I mean, they, they, they send me emails all the time right now of trainings across the state. So, I can go handily.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the recruitment ad in the, in the, I guess in the Gazette for a firefighter, a small ad. You know, I'm not taking quarter page or anything like that, but, um, seems appropriate.
Should you put it in the evergreen though?
Yeah.
Evergreen gets more coverage.
If they put it in the Gazette, don't they put it in every green? One or the other?
No.
I picked the evergreen.
Yeah, evergreen's better.
Because not everybody gets things.
And that's a free paper, so it'll go out fine.
Okay. I'd look for a motion of that nature.
I'll make a motion to advertise in the evergreens for fire department members and first responders.
Motion is made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion. How big do we want it? One inch, two inch, whatever? I don't know. Well, they're-
How many would have you want? What is that?
I can tell you about two by two inches is about twenty dollars, because we've done it with my father. It's about two, you know, about that size. It's about twenty dollars. And it goes, that's for one.
For one time.
Mm-hmm. And that's in the evergreen. The other thing that I was going to suggest is if someone here or within the fire department could do up a flyer, we are doing a big massive campaign out with the Save the Don, Save the Braise, and our flyers are going out all over. We would start distributing those flyers for you.
Beautiful.
I can think of something to put together.
Yeah, all I need is that. One, I'll even make the copies for you, all I want, and the, the-
Then you guys can get together and figure that out. Great, great. So, what, two by, try two by two?
Yeah.
Yes, it's a one color, two inches.
All right, just one week or how many weeks?
A lot, yeah, I would say.
I'd say more than one week.
So, yeah, so what, do, try, try four, try four issues? What?
See what happens, yeah.
I can imagine one person, we can get any response.
Okay.
I think two by two is big enough.
I think so.
How many words do you want to fit in there?
Full page.
I can get word, you can get one more. All right, get it, Tim.
Just a second. Finally, we need to call Kyle.
So, the-
Do it for four weeks.
Yeah, so, four weeks, two by two, in the evergreen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I would also look for a motion to adopt the paper proposal that Kyle Reel has, has outlined here. I think it would be-
So moved.
Made. Uh-
So moved.
Looking for a second?
He said made.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Discussion.
It's not in our budget this year.
So, firefighter, we get forty-five thousand dollars, forty-five five for firefighters. The, the fire protection, I think we could, um, run a variance on that for the amount of money we're talking about.
And I'll work it in my next budget when I get down for duty, obviously. So, it's, then it's a lot easier to see you in here.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Look for a motion to appoint interimly Isaac Grant to assistant chief and Thomas Simi to training officer.
So moved.
Motion is made.
I'll second it.
And seconded. Discussion. Are there terms, uh, limits, like years? We'd have to look at that in the future, right? I don't know.
Well, usually the chief, assistant chief and training officer need to apply, like, there's a special application that I had, I wanted to do assistant chief.
Right.
This is kinda just to fill in the gap until such time as the council decides to advertise for those positions as being open.
Sounds good. All right, um, kind of open ended, but any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to put out forbid the water tower to both McGuire Iron and KLM. We'll see what they would come up with in lieu of, uh, going through with MSA. Make that motion looking for a second.
Are you gonna write it up then, or what?
I will contact, I will tell them to make a proposal.
Based on?
Based on number one, McGuire Iron is very familiar with our tank. Guy knows it by looking that up. Um, and number two, KLM claims that they were in, and they showed me a picture of the, of the tank from the inside by email.
So they can make the, they can do a proposal, bid on a picture of seeing something in 2011?
These are, this is a big vessel, fifty thousand gallons. Yeah.
I just have a really brief question about it. The motion that we actually passed was for MSA to receive bids. Are we positive they're not gonna receive bids from these two entities? But MSA is not gonna receive bids.
I already, I contacted McGuire Iron, and I said, have you heard anything from MSA today? And this guy said, no. And I said, is there any reason that MSA would have contacted your organization and you wouldn't have heard about it? He said, no, because I'm the guy that handles, Minnesota's my territory. And he is more than willing to come. And he goes, why are you working through an engineer? You know, I mean, I don't understand.
Did you tell him you were gonna have another company do a bid? Did you tell McGuire?
McGuire? No.
Well, that's why he's wondering that, George. He's thinking, is this the sole person doing this? No, you're getting another bid from another company.
I told him, I got...
Based on what they have put along the board.
I'm seeing where the conversation is going here, but I made, I made a motion, and I'd like to do this. And, um, nobody seconded it, so I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded.
It's free, right?
It's free?
Right, I'm not gonna spend any money, but I'll second it.
Yeah, you know, and they're, and they're on it, you know, they're, these are the guys that actually do the work rather than just write the proposal. So, motion is made and seconded.
What are you doing?
Further discussion. Motion is made, is contacting KLM, who I've already contacted, and McGuire, and getting a bid for the same, for the, for the interior coating and the, uh, and the refurbishment of the tank. Dry clean, sandblasted, interior coating of the tank. It's not rocket science.
So we're gonna guarantee that there's gonna be a bid apples to apples?
I think when we receive, I think when we receive all the bids, we could look at them and compare them. I mean, if they come in twenty thousand dollars less, obviously, they don't feel that they're doing the same thing. Well, I mean, if you're just like anything else, you gotta decide which bid you go with.
Right.
As a council, you know, whether it's Jokers or MSA.
So then, okay, MSA is working on this, so what are you gonna do? Call and say, hey, back off?
No, I think the more bids we get the better.
Yeah?
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, well...
Especially if it's free, and I don't wanna paint it, what else is a bid?
If I remember right, there was only like three companies in the state or in the nation that did this type of work? Was that, I thought that I heard that at one of these meetings, three or four companies. So they're all gonna be, but aren't they all gonna bid the same thing like Chris said?
Right.
I mean, we might be saying, wasting another two, if they're not gonna bid, that's why you have, that's why you have something.
An engineering company who doesn't do anything for a month.
But they are doing what?
What?
What is the contract state? What are they gonna do?
When did you get this?
Eighty-four. That's always up the course of the...
It would've been nice to have seen what they're going to do, especially when I asked them. He wants to see me ask. What's that?
That's just saying we're agreeing to let them assist us in the painting.
That's what the motion was like, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, right, it does no different than the motion we made with that.
I know.
Right.
All right. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion fails. All right. We wait. Uh, anything else?
Marsh's...
Oh, Marsh's, I'm sorry to hear this, Marsh. You know, whatever. Yeah, I guess thank you, even brief, it was, you know...
There was just too much other stuff going on.
Yeah, understood.
I tried, but I had to, but I had to.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, um, anything else?
Yes.
Yep.
I need a motion to accept her resignation and a very...
I will make that motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I made a motion to buy those three lots. Other vacant, trying to make, they're held by part of the guy.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion.
Do we have a final cost on it? It'll be around a thousand for the three lots, and then what the closing costs would be. I mean, we do all the paperwork and everything.
Approximation on the closing?
Oh, five hundred dollars, something like that.
It won't be much, if I'm... Okay, could you, could you write something up for us and send it to the council? As a proposal, so that we have something to work with?
I have to give something for our coordinating or something like that.
Right.
But that's, that's what we have is, is when I talked to Greg today, he figured it'd be around a thousand dollars, and then the closing costs, you know, to get everything. But if you wanna wait on it, then find what we can give them exactly.
Yeah, I, I'd feel more comfortable if we could table this.
Yeah, why don't you take, and then I can get the exact amount.
Yeah, at least know what we're hearing. Please, at least know, be cleaner.
Did you make any, is that right?
Right. Anything else?
Do we have to make some kind of a motion about shortening the process for the fire department interviews? The packets, getting the pack? That, or is that just a, I think we have to look into this.
Like a procedural thing?
I don't think we need...
I don't think there are any SOPs, though.
Okay. I was just curious, because sometimes we get to do things when they're put off.
Yes.
When they're put to new business, or whatever, we get to make motion.
You did tell me that it needs council approval. But I don't know if that means to change when the packets were given to the potential...
Put SOP on it?
I can write one on it, and then the SOPs, that's no problem, yeah.
I'll get those, I'll get those figures and...
Don't do that. Thank you.
It's just very clear. You know Dave has been working over at the Legion building, making it very, very nice. And there is a big old table there that's just kind of big in the way, it's an old conference table. Go onto the Legion, and I asked the Legion if that could be removed, either just broken down and gotten out of there. Old TVs, just a bunch of junk over there. And the Legion said, fine. And I talked to Dave, and Dave said I needed to ask the city council because in reality, you own everything that's over there.
So I haven't even been in there for a long time, I should...
You want it?
What's, what's the number?
Well, it's, it's a...
Besides the table.
Well, there's a lot of tables and a lot of chairs. Some of them aren't very good, and some of them are, and so we're trying to sort through them. He's done a beautiful job of it inside of this building. It's really getting nice. And, um, we have many thousands of people coming from our home. And we've got two, we have two programs that are gonna be happening, and we're really decorating that, amazing that building all night. So we wanna get rid of all the junk out of it. And Dave is willing to do that, but he said I had to get an okay from the city to get rid of and sort through what's broken and what's not okay. And, and so I'm asking permission for you to trust Dave in getting rid of the stuff that's not any good there.
I know, it will be called to the...
It will cost nothing.
Will it be called to the transportation and you figure?
I'm always into that.
Your house.
We have to...
No, we just cleaned our garage.
No, we have to hire, we have to get another dumpster to finish our garage, our roof up there. And I told Dave last year when I had the dumpster, all you have to do is bust it up and throw it in my dumpster. I prepaid for that, just fill up the dumpster.
Thank you.
So he said he will take care of that and bust it up and throw it in your dumpsters when, when they're empty, by just breaking it up. He's gonna try to give it away first, which, can't believe somebody wants it, but maybe they do.
Believe me, these people pick up the trash and ruin it.
Well, he said he would try to recycle it.
Motion, correct.
And then there's one other part of that. There's a bunch of long benches there, you know? And I'm requesting that Mon Hawk could use those during Mon Hawk kettle days in a different location. And, um, we would take a real good responsibility. We have a, um, a music group coming in from the cities to perform up by my building, which is also by Dave's home. We'll be nice, Dave, and we need to have some seating up there, and we don't want it in that building during the event, so that we would take care of it up there for seating. So we're just kind of moving things around. We need to make sure that the council's okay with that. And I will be more specific later.
Well, without objection, I mean, I don't know if we need, you know, a motion to tell Dave we can, you know, help Morgan clean out the...
That's part of the Legion, so we would have to be...
Legion's already okay to help, you know?
Right.
My wife to Howard.
They're okay.
But Dave would need it cleared here before he really did.
Without objection, it's okay for Dave to do that. I don't know if we need a motion, but I don't think we really bring out.
Did notify, no conversation, and...
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, it'll be nice over there for us.
As long as everything that is nobody's gotten rid of, that it is not kept in the city garage.
No, it has to be good.
It's personal group, it's...
I know, I know. So that's why I'm, that's why I'm specifying.
Yeah, and I will even take that.
Okay, done.
Good.
One other thing that I've got, I contacted DOT and, about crosswalks on seventy-three here. And on the, on the sheet that I just passed out, you'll see three locations that are already, um, crosswalks as far as DOT is concerned. There's a communicator from, uh, Johnson, which name Caitlin, um, that said that, I, I, maybe I saw it so many times that I just became blind to it, but those, there are signs for crosswalks there. But it is the city's obligation that if we want to paint the crosswalks in those locations, those are the only locations that I, as I understand, that qualify for crosswalks. And, um, so it would be a, a cost to the city, and how far we wanna go, whether we want lights or bells and whistles or pylons or whatever, but, um, um, it was a suggestion by one of the residents when I was going on top and told them, one of the citizens, that, you know, it'd be nice to have a crosswalk. I said, I'll buy the, and you can see my communicator, buy the, the playground. And I said, no, the curbs aren't right, and it's not high track, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, we, that might be for a future date, but, um, you know, I'll do some more research as far as, uh, costs and to hang, hang the walk. And I'll probably wanna go with that, obviously. I just wanted to, uh, hear that too. Anything else?
So they feel that the signs are sufficient for the crosswalks?
That's their only obligation. That's...
Really?
Yeah, so if we...
That kind of goes, because we used to have painted ones, and when we had the new highway put through, they never remarked it. I never would remember being told that it was our responsibility to put the paint down.
Well, that's, yeah, unfortunately, that's the, that's the...
So if we put, okay, so if we put painted ones in, the signs come now?
No, no, it would be in addition to...
I think DOT is more obligated to have the signs there, but if we choose to paint the crosswalk, we can do any...
I think, you know, I've been told by people, well, I would stop, but there's no painted crosswalk there, so I have to.
I think we do.
Yep. When I've been standing waiting across the street when I get the mail and stuff at the, from the...
Yeah, those are the three official that DOT recognizes as far as, you know, right. We can, you know, keep that and decide where...
Painted crosswalks?
And where we wanna...
The pedestrians had the right way to anyone's... Are you gonna motion to pay the claims?
I asked, nobody, nobody made a motion.
I make a motion to pay the claims, except the consent agenda. I was consenting.
I will, not the consent agenda, because it's not consented. I will, I'll go with the claims, but I moved the revision for last month's minutes from that. Because it's still, you know, inaccurate. We can vote on it, you can make a motion that's separate from it, but it's still just, I can't go along with it.
Did you, did you read it? It was revised?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I certainly did.
There's nothing...
So, okay, so I've separated the, the, that minutes, those minutes from last month out of the consent agenda, so I will look for a motion for that.
Well, we already made a motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Not in the consent agenda.
As presented, yeah. I mean, that's what my motion was made on, the consent.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? I think that the revised minutes are still not accurate. Please, stay in order, please. Um, I still think that they are not accurate, and there are excerpts and additions and omissions and opinions that are just not of professional quality to depict what went on at the meeting.
Well, nothing is good enough, so there's gotta be something. And this is revised, so, whether you like it or not, I, I feel it was fairly accurate, so I'll reiterate again. I mean, nothing, anything that she, that Bernadine has put out, any of our agenda packets have you agreed on? Nothing.
Why are you talking in hyperbole? We're talking about this motion right here.
I know, I'm just talking...
It's under discussion, isn't it?
It is.
Correct?
Under our future, or our past agenda, our minutes and claims and what have you, you have always questioned it. There has not been one that you have not. There has not been one that you have not.
So, you'd rather I not ask questions?
I'm not saying that you can't have a question.
Call the question. Question is called.
I want to remove one thing though, before we.
Question's been called, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I, I'm sorry, I, I take that back. All those in favor say aye. Aye, I, I oppose it. So, go ahead.
Are you speaking aye?
I oppose, I'm a name, I'm a name.
I don't know if people vote, so.
All those in favor, aye, we'll call it. Aye.
For accepting the consent agenda and paying the claims, this is motion.
Aye.
All those opposed, name. All right, anything else? For a motion adjourned.
So move.
Aye.
Aye.
I have, yeah, I have abscesses. So, we see my tiny apple down to ten kilograms. And I started tasting it. Then I turned it to me. And then every other day, I started a few days. And I went into the doctor, he said, well, yeah. Oh, God, it was bad. And my husband, he's a very, he's like an Oscar. So we're sitting there and I'm. And the doctor was telling us, my sister. He's been a little bit careful. I mean, Doc, yeah, with the top of my hair, my little sister just nodded off. Only we got a little bit of the doctor's system, say, don't do that.
I'll believe it, but I didn't.
Well, you know, mom, I'm not sure. There's some patients in my, uh.
But if they don't participate, they'll be in that. I tell everybody, they have to be like that little fundraiser. I tell everybody, if somebody will say, Mom, I'm gonna have surgery and I can't, they go to. So it's such a great, anything. And I'm, this is my back, they, that's, Dave. It's a question, yeah, because I would like, okay, I would rather. And I know you, I know you.
I can believe.
Did you see that Walmart moved today, Volopius? They changed your policy when you. Oh, I think you're good. They'll go to second, you're the boss. The last, blood loss of dogs in the country, they're fighting Walmart, apparently you're voting for it. Because it undermines their healthcare.
No, it just, I've been on it.
I had a, a toll booth. I was sitting on the street in Losport, Volopius, and I have never taken a, like, what my name? The way it's all good, so, that do not ever scratch those. So I'm on that, keep lying right now. I'll be the first to tell you personally, I was full term in high school, but. You David, I was, I guess it's the new way I get away, that one point. Honestly, I would start.
And that's what it was, yeah. And then I'll be going to the gym.
I've been here for the, you know, before the doctors.
Or life therapy.
True, oh, I.
Then nothing else, but major research, I would say.
I thought something.
Yeah, because that's something you work, you work.
From what my doctor said, when I went on there, because like I said, you couldn't believe I had. But, um, he said the dual clinic had the highest rate of, on the street.
Well, yeah, because it's so.
And that's why we're getting there.
American Cancer Center, they raise money for cancer.
How are you?
The reason is that. Yes, you walk, you walk on that line. One or two team has been helping on the track. And one or two. And we did a site election, we had a meeting. Crowded Sony, the building, they talked, or David. They found a junk, so that. And then what they do is they start a. Resaline, just even despite all the jokes, they decorate it with a lot of feel. And then you can count them, they'll live out. We think I tried right in the news, like, um, heard right in the late there. So it's just a little short for your. Always, no matter what, half the county's made it shorter.
On the side law.
So at this point, we have.
First of all.
But they, so I did that for years, but even with the. And we're just. So, and that's the word, they're pulled up. You know, it's ten twenty dollars over there, and they should, you know, and you have to make it on the. So, so. That's your insurance, just like. She thinks I have the bar drinking whiskey.
No, it's not necessarily, because every mountain cabin that we're moving into. June first, I'm, I'm going to tell June first, I turned in my donation. I can be on board as long as I, I rest in peace, Tom. June first is my last day. Yeah. I just gave the rest of baseball, my part. Yeah. But yeah, so, I know this weekend, so much and everything, but this, what is playing still? Is like our logo, my party was reported. It's Saturday. And, and rich, which is a good idea. That's terrible. Yes, you know, safety protection. It's a story. I mean, that's, we're talking about this a long time. And so I'm, yeah. What's your wrong, I mean, you're, what's your wrong? I, I, I think this weekend, the fall of the sun, it'll all be. This time even though.
Yeah, Memorial Weekend, K back.
Yeah, oh yeah, 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 no, it's water, oh yeah, 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 actually, I'm. Over at General Trade, he's got his own stuff by this time. Have a pleasure, the river waters, like, just go there and sleep. And they should go there and take millions, but I have a right.
Hell, that's a good, thank you. Oh, shit. Besides that, I'm not buying you anything, I'm not paying for it. Mine has to be free.
That's what it is. And that's what it would see.
Processed, and how to make people change themselves. Say, if you get them. Greater good, but that should be, I'm gonna do it based on.
I think it's passed, the city.
You gonna increase my life? I don't think so, I don't think so.
And, and, and it's true, it's simple, and it's not so easy now, because it's just gonna be hard now. County parts will be, I'll be, you can't, county. Counties are for it. There's no benefit to the city. Oh, yeah, they, they won't do it against the state.
Oh, thank you, thank you. My taxes won't go up. Is that promised?
You know, I've been commissioner only almost six years.
So, gee, there's a, there's a lot of things. For you.
Yeah, I mean, not, not a force of the union, I mean, I was your, you know, your mother after.
Lois has someone going on already that, and I wanted to have sort of a date, I guess, I was down at Indy before I could have. And I was always, it becomes a meeting. So I was used to kind of having a schedule of stories that would come in, so.
A little bit closer to the Monroeville base, maybe like to talk about. Lois gave me one of your, the next story. And now we've got a lot.
So, isn't there a certain amount of money you get? You have a certain, let's see.
Last month.
So that would help you if you. If you got it at our.
But, um, we've got.
Well, that was the, to get our state money?
That's coming up in the cities and some things that.
Solid form, what do you got, the evidence? From the state, I'm not sure.
Kicks in bigger, the bigger for the retirement.
What's his name?
Right. Two percent. I know for, for the training. It's based on the retirement. I have to give them this gradual.
I don't have.
In the state every year. All they want is a jet, a check.
Just in case, I'll put it up.
Whoever the holiday people have, every time they get a house. And every time we get a fire, they come. The only thing we're not doing is free will talk, because they have. There's some talk of that, because they're effective. They kind of don't, you don't want, they don't want, they don't want. But I know Austin, sure. Number one, sort of kind of pushing. But some of them, yeah, it's, I just, we can't achieve the one for the one, I don't, I'm not into the politics of this yet, really. Just figuring stuff out, like how we're on the deal part, and that all, you know what I mean? But, you know, we've talked about it for years. Guys, it's out to like, you will wipe yourself, you will wipe it over this. I mean, I don't see. Fire or, I don't really, so. It's just a matter of, yeah, just look at your options. Our funding here is. Because it's a city, not a department. Just relying on, on, on the budget, what they say is there. Okay, well, we're, put the chips on the table, we need a new building and a truck, watch and go, what we. Says right here. Yeah, no, but, right, I've been on the other side, I've been sitting there, I get it, but. So, you know, well, I agree, it's a little step. It's good to see you, what's your boy doing, he graduated last year, right? Correct, he's all good at construction right now. Do they, what do the guys name you, just start with, um, part of Sturzer? He's loving it, because it's something different, you know, he's roughing one day, next day he's upping his floor and the next day he's building somebody's dog. Like the days go by so fast, Dad, I'm like. It's a good job for you, because that's a great kind of job.
Right.
So, okay, we'll see you, have a good one.
Cool.